Most of them, two thirds of them are required.
Yeah, I think everybody out there is.
Ready?
Yep.
Call to order, this meeting in the Nettle Creek School, School Board will show all members present with the exception of Mr. Sankey, Mrs. Houghton, and Mrs. Bloss. Are we in compliance with the open meeting law?
Yes.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and move into silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All right. First on your agenda, we do have an addition of two items that will be items H and I. So in order to add those to the agenda that they were missed off, I need a motion and then a second, and then we'll vote on adding those as well. So do I have a motion on adding items H and I for the 2026 budget transfer resolution and the 2026 budget hearing resolution? Sandy?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or zero? Next, we have approval and or correction of the regular board meeting minutes from September 10th, 2025, and the additional board member minutes from September 16th, 2025. Motion? Mike?
Second.
Ruthie? Any discussion or corrections? I did have one correction on the September 16th minutes in the opening section. Let me just pull it up so I can make sure. So we had multiple meetings. The first call to order opened up the work session and in that very top call to order section, it says we, we moved to adjourn to public hearing and adjourned at 6:26 and that wasn't until after the work session. So you have it listed there too. It's, it's just in duplicate. Anything else for the minutes? If not, all those in favor with that correction, signal by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or zero? I assume no public comment. We'll move to financial items presented for board consideration and action. First, we have consideration approval of claims payroll and ECAs with payroll totaling nine hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-six cents, claims totaling nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-four cents, HES ECA totaling seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents, and junior senior high school ECA totaling forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-three cents. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Mike?
Second.
Sandy? In discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or zero? We'll move to review of monthly financial statements.
Okay, these were included in your board packet. You can see, point out specifically on the financial snapshot that September expenses on preschool, a hundred thousand of that is moving a hundred thousand dollars to a CD, a three month CD, hoping to just gain some additional dollars and maximize that as much as we can until we figure out the future of the vouchers and things like that. So just trying to be good stewards of our money there while we have the option. Again, a short term CD, three months, so allows us the flexibility. But that why, that's why there is a hundred and twenty-three thousand in those September expenses. Rainy day, I will also point out that year to date expense, so we did rainy day funds. We use that to pay for the technology project so that we could update devices over summer break. And in, instead of rolling those out mid-year. And now that we have received bond proceeds, Amber and I are working on all of the processing, all of the items that go along with that. So you will see what Amber has already taken care of, but will show up in the November board meeting is the transaction to repay that. So when we come back in November, rainy day will be made whole again. Cash flow for the education fund. Operation. Debt. Rainy day. And preschool. And our lunch fund. On the investment report, you can see the addition in the short term CD, which is the second table. The last one is the addition of that three month preschool CD. You can also see the addition up on the first chart under bank accounts. The last one is the 2025 GO bond proceeds. So the addition of both of those. And then on the grant reimbursement, I talked about this at our September meeting, but trying to capture a true picture of how many grant dollars we receive. We have applied for this year's high ability grant, but have not received approval yet. That's why it does not have any of the additional information included in that. As soon as we receive that, that will be updated. Same with the school safety informative assessment. You can also see that some of the title grants, they have extended Title II 2025. For example, that end date used to be nine thirty twenty-five and they have recently extended that, although we have no funds remaining. It's really just the way it seems like the grant process works and funding. I will say this year's grant application and actual receiving of the funding has been a little different than years past. It seems like it has been slower. Usually at this point, we have, for example, high ability funds. But we're just seeing that process moving slower for whatever reason. But still receiving those funds at some point. So just, just an update on that. It makes it a little bit more challenging on our end to continue providing some of those services. But our team does a really good job with that. It also is part of the reason why some of the end dates continue to get extended. I would answer any questions that you have on financial documents.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. If not, we'll move to consideration and approval of the 2026 budget.
Yep, we will take each of the budget items separately. We'll be asking you to approve them as presented. The hearing was in September and each of these items were included in your board packet. I'll talk about the two additions to the agenda, which are the last two resolutions when we get to that point. The first one is just the approve, consideration and approval of the 2026 budget. I would ask that you approve it as recommended.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Sandy?
Second.
Ruthie? In discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or zero? Next, we have consideration and approval of the 2026 bus replacement plan. I think you just drawn here.
Note presented in your board packet, asked that you approve as presented.
Take a motion for the bus replacement plan? Mike?
Second.
Ruthie? In discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or zero? And finally, we have consideration approval of the 2026 capital projects plan. Do I have a motion for that? Sandy?
Second.
Mike? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or zero? Next, we have recommendation and approval of the resolution for transfers from the education fund to the operations fund during the calendar year of 2026.
This is a normal action item at this time. This allows us, so the Department of Local Government Finance allows school corporations to take not more than fifteen percent and transfer from education to operations. This resolution allows us the ability to do that. It was included in your board packet. I would ask that you approve this resolution as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Mike?
Second.
Ruthie? In discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or zero? We have recommendation and approval of the resolution for local income tax distribution.
This resolution allows us to take local income tax distribution and put it into our operations fund. Would ask that you approve this resolution as presented.
Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Ruthie?
Second.
Second by Sandy. In discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or zero? Next two items are the ones added to the agenda, so they won't be on your paper sheets. First, we have recommendation and approval of the 2026 budget transfer resolution.
This resolution is a normal action item at this time. This resolution allows the corporation treasurer to transfer appropriations within the fund if needed. An example with that, of that would be transferring appropriations within the education fund, but not outside of. It allows us to make those moves as needed. I would ask that you approve this resolution as presented.
Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Mike?
Second.
Ruthie? In discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or zero? And item I, recommendation and approval of the 2026 budget hearing resolution.
This resolution is to make appropriations or transfer appropriations outside of funds. So an example of this one would be transferring appropriations from operations to education, not just within the specific fund. Those types of transfers, if needed, have to be reported to the Department of Local Government Finance if they are made. I would ask that you approve this resolution as presented.
Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Sandy?
Second.
Mike, in discussion? I just want to make sure for the agenda. So the title is 2026 budget hearing resolution. Is that the correct title or should it be the transfers outside of funds?
On H?
On I?
Yeah. Budget transfers.
Transfers outside of funds.
So H, recommendation and approval of the 26 budget transfer resolution within funds. I, recommendation and approval of the 26 budget transfer resolution outside of funds. Thank you.
Yep. All right. So I have a motion and a second for approval of the 2026 budget transfer outside of funds. Any discussion on that?
Who was the second? I didn't.
Mike.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Or zero? All right, we'll move to school news. Ms. Schaefer?
We will start out with Mrs. Locke at HES.
So next we are going to be starting our parent teacher conferences. So teachers are here enough for that. Our fall parties are going to be on the first, so you're able to dress up and you can, they pray that they do. The teachers are kind of working on a new process for you in preparation of what we've worked on in cluster. Teachers working hard with that. I learned checkpoints have started in sixth grade. That was the kickoff for us and they did that math this week. So we continue. I run twice a year now. Then the last thing I'm going to share is we did receive the Wayne Henry Foundation grant. So thank you so much to Chadley and Marley for that, for their help with that grant. It's a six hundred dollar grant, two thousand dollars of which will be used for public environment to come in and do hour long presentations in classes in K through three. And then three thousand, six hundred of it goes to book box sets of science debatable books for A through two. So she put aside.
Awesome. Thank you, Mrs. Locke. We will, I'll do Mr. Bomber next with some updates from the Director of Operations.
We received a new bus last week. That bus, Twitter bus eleven offer out, went to Bagan Kitter. Our twelve year home or bus inspections were completed last week. Everything went well with that. Mini bus number two has gone to the body shop to be repaired after the accident in Newcastle. That's it for transportation side. We are, oh, we had, we hired one sub bus driver, Carrie Young, and she was, she was a sub driving at Dry High, but she lives local here, so looking to be closer to home on, on sub driving. Our projects that we've been working on. The tennis had got a new yard barn to put their supplies in, so we removed the old yard barn that was up next to the containment area on the south side of the building. I'm disposing it. And then there was another one on the northeast corner of the pin sports that's been removed and disposed of as well. Practice football field. We hauled probably two triaxle loads of dirt on it, spread it, overseeded, fertilized, water, a bit of water in that. We got a new grass seed coming up on that. Wanted to thank Tiger Boosters and for helping out with the cost of that and Mike Wicks for the use of several pieces of equipment to bring that project. We did fall cleaning over a fall break, tried to get ahead of some of the sickness that was going around, so we just de cleaned over fall break. Chiller fence, I don't know if anybody noticed, some of the fence posts on that were, were laid over and the fence wasn't standing up straight. We were able to fix all the posts that were leaning on that. We're working on repairing several outside lights, hall lights, lights on the buildings that have been out for a while. The hot water valve that heats the pool water, we replaced it over fall break. It had, we're having issues with fluctuating pool temperatures and so we replaced, replaced that hot water valve. And we had bleacher inspections that were completed on all bleachers, you know, high school, football field, baseball field, softball, and I'm waiting on a follow up report on that.
Follow up report as in the results?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're working on getting rid of some spare buses. We scrapped a bus, bus two, an old bus two. We've got some other ones that we've removed from insurance that we're carting out. Couple of other buses that we think we can, instead of scrapping them, maybe able to cart them out and take a little bit of our money out and scrap those buses.
And to give kudos to Jason and his crew, they are starting, they have already started the cleanup and lock rooms in our gym, home and gym. It's really starting to come together and it's a little bit stuff. I told Jason, got one locker room that's, I guess, close to the south. I probably had not seen it that clean in probably twenty years, twenty-five years. So it's, it's really profane and I'm a great toddler, so we're going to actually have lock rooms for the kids.
Yes. Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Albert from Technology.
Well, I don't have any more. Yeah, they, no, we've been pretty busy last month. We, we received all of our E rate stuff for wireless access points, the wifi, undersurges to, to house those. So the last month, we've been prepping for that. And then the week before fall break, we kind of did a test pilot with the second floor of high school and just replaced all of those throughout the day. One crazy TV night wasn't here until nine or ten. Regardless, did that, tested well, had a couple of flinky things here and there. Then over break, we replaced a hundred and eleven access points and ten, ten switches total, which pretty much does all of them except for the two in this gym. I just have to ramp the lift to get this done. Next big thing for us is our contract with ENA, which is our internet provider, will be up in July. So we will go out to bid here shortly for a new provider or the same provider. I'm hopeful that New Lisbon will take a bite this year. I've been trying to get them the last couple of times around and they just haven't wanted to run fiber far enough more to get to the high school, but I reached out to them the other day and sounded promising. Could take a shot at it. I'd like to get some local business for us. Several other schools switched to them had it much, so.
I get them going by my house too.
Maybe.
They're, they're getting closer.
Plus like all this federal government money for, for extending fiber out to rural communities, like it's great. It's like just few blocks farther north. Come on, guys. It'll, it'll take care of your business. Other, other than that though, part of the bond, or piece of the bond project, we're going to go to South and Bus Strand, first floor and second floor of the high school. Hopefully that will help tremendously. So that will cover all the major cellular providers and yeah, we're open to pick that up. So, so all the issues in the front office, it's a total dead zone in several areas of Oklahoma too. So that's really all I've got.
Awesome. Thank you. Before we move on, any questions for Mr. Albert or Mr. Bolt? News from the junior senior high school. Mr. Keith Lehman won the September Staff Member of the Month. This month's criteria was over creativity and innovation within their instruction. Mr. Lehman was nominated by quite a few students, even students who he made an impact on from years prior. The Tigers took five eighth graders to Ball State University and competed against seven other schools in an academic invitational. This was a new adventure for our junior senior high school team. The students did a variety of challenges and came away with a second place finish. In athletic news, the boys' cross country team placed first and the girls' cross country team placed second in the TEC. We host girls volleyball sectional coming up this week. I believe it's six o'clock on Thursday that our girls' team will play. And we feel pretty good about our sectional draw. We are hosting that sectional, so our facilities will be in use on Thursday and Saturday for that. Mr. Alex Tinkle represented Hagerstown extremely well and made it all the way to regionals in the championship match for tennis. Also, just an FYI, I, Greensport Police will be doing some training on our parking lot over the weekend. And so if you see additional police cars on school property over the weekend, I believe it's Sunday, because we said Saturday, there's too much going on, that they are to be some additional training. That's news from the junior senior high school. News from the district office. I'm going to throw it to Mrs. Tinkle first to share some exciting updates in her area.
First is a proud mom. Thank you. But as a proud director of learning, we have some great celebrations from both buildings. Today was a big culmination of some great things that have been happening over the past couple of weeks. We administered successfully, we have a hundred and ten sophomores and they took the PSAT and MSQT, so the National Merit Scholarship, PSAT today, and it was pretty much flawless. We had a hundred and five testers, so we had five absent students. That's ninety-five percent participation today and it went fantastic. Towards the end of testing, I received a phone call to head to the elementary school. So in October, from October through December, we, for our preschool, we could have an unannounced visit from the state at SSA, the Department of Special Services Administration, where they come in and they do a pretty thorough audit of all of our classrooms, of the students, of the staff, of all of our records. And we had consultant Annie Parks come in today and she gave our preschool an absolutely glowing review. We passed in all areas and are renewed. There were no insufficiencies that were issued and she had some great things to say. She said, I would like to give your program kudos for having some of the most organized and complete files I've seen this year. I want to give kudos to our high school staff for our PSAT administration today. We had eight fantastic proctors. We had the tech team there, ready to go. The students were so well behaved. Our proctors went through a lot of training and meetings sitting with me, so kudos to that. And also to thank our entire preschool staff, our nineteen wonderful staff members. Andrew Solis is amazing. If you've never been able to visit our preschool, I encourage you to do so. Our entire staff just does a remarkable job. And every single one of our students is in compliance with everything the state asks, everything with all of our staff members. Everyone is in compliance with everything that is asked of them. And thank you also to Sarah and the Everyone is in compliance with everything that is asked of them. And thank you also to Sarah and Amber also, who helped me organize a lot of that, but especially Andrew Solis. Um, she is a leader in our preschool, but um Lynn Beatty, Shannon Brady, and Tabitha Robinson in our classrooms as well, with all of our other staff members. They just did a phenomenal job. I just had a great visit with Annie today.
Awesome. Thank you. Two of the uh, I, I feel like in my per- from my perspective, pieces of the Director of Learning role are the preschool and um is that corporation test coordinator. When we made the transition from Mrs. Bryant to Mrs. Tinkle and had myself uh overseeing both of those at one point in time, uh, I was a little bit concerned because they're just the very monumental task. They take a lot of attention to detail. Um, and uh, a lot of things that you have to do to make sure that you are in compliance for both testing and um, not just running the preschool, but to make sure um that we are meeting the requirements to keep our past equality uh rating and our voucher funding. And since Mrs. Tinkle has uh come into the Director of Learning position, she has really taken both of those pieces um in her role and completed them exceptionally. And uh, she got her workout today, running all over and never stopped. Um, yeah. But I, I think today was a um true like, yep, we, we have made that transition and um are continuing not only to maintain things, but continuing to grow our preschool um in, in just our practices and making sure that we're staying up to date with those, but also to um ensure that we are continuing to just do a better job um of testing environments and opportunities for assessments for our students. So, kudos to her because those are two both very huge tasks, and she has done them phenomenally. And uh, while today was probably a little stressful, she's done a great job, so celebrate that, too. Uh, we also just came off of fall break last week. We hope our students and staff had a very well-deserved rest full time. Uh, we have a planned e-learning day coming up next Friday. Our elementary teachers will be using that day to complete some uh parent-teacher conferences. Uh, we encourage parents to attend those. The elementary does an awesome job, really trying to get every parent um contacted during uh parent-teacher conferences, even if they can't come into the school for that conference, uh, making connection with them so that they can uh open the lines of communication about their students' learning. Um, our end of the first nine weeks was right before fall break, and so uh it's, it feels like school just started, but we are already one quarter down, and so time is fine. Um, as Mr. Ballmer stated, we are entering into that sickness season, whether it be flu, strep, um, whatever virus or just bacteria that is going around. We have entered that, that, we usually see that pick up um towards the beginning of, of October and really uh go through about February. And so, encouraging our families to um make sure that they are uh taking um proactive precautions, uh, hand washing, um, just cleaning high-touch surfaces, keeping students home when they truly are sick um and have a fever, so that we can keep as many healthy students in school as possible. Um, and then also just uh, you know, a couple of things that I wanted to share is always taking uh individuals who are interested in helping us keeping our operations going from day to day. Two of those positions are on-call substitute teachers and on-call substitute nurse. Uh, uh, if there's anybody that um has time available and is interested in that, they can get in contact with us and uh be put on our on-call substitute teacher and nurse list. Um, you, it is, you know, when teachers, when students are sick, it's one thing, but when teachers and the people who are responsible for these individuals and taking care of these individuals, when they are sick, it's uh so helpful just to have people who will fill in so that we can keep things functioning as normal as possible. So, those applications are on the website and can also be um, you can call the admin office um for people who are interested. And that's all I have from district news.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to board member reports for uh, reports, concerns, and/or requests for information. We'll start with Mrs. Lamar. Uh, Mrs. Schraub?
Yeah, you're good.
Mr. Banning?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me either, so. Move on. I show no old business. We'll move to personnel items presented for board consideration and action. Mrs. Schaefer?
We don't have any certified staff recommendations uh this month. We have five non-certified staff recommendations, a long list of E C A state positions and volunteer positions. Those are um for majority of our winter uh athletics um positions being recommended. Uh, we also have one resignation. I would ask that you approve the personnel report as presented.
Thank you, and I do have a request from Mrs. Lamar to split this into two votes uh due to a relationship to Chris Lamar, who's on there. So, we will take, uh, I'll take a motion to accept all uh personnel items other than Chris Lamar um as presented. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Sandy? Ruthie? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or zero? Now, I will take a motion to accept uh Chris Lamar uh alone uh as presented. Mike? Sandy?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And you will abstain? We'll have three zero one. Alright, thank you. We'll move to other items for board, board consideration. Uh, first, we have the first reading of board policies. They're listed there and in your board packet. Um, please either begin or continue reading those and provide feedback before next meeting. Any questions on any of those? Uh, we'll move to second reading of board policies. We have uh D five twenty-five, E one hundred and E one hundred R, E one fifty and E one fifty R, E two twenty-five, F two seventy-five and F two seventy-five E, F three hundred, uh, F three hundred E one, F three hundred E two, and F three hundred R, F three twenty-five, F three fifty, E one hundred and G one hundred R. I have a motion to accept those board policies as presented in your packet.
Some moved.
Sandy?
Second.
Mike? Any discussion? Alls, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or zero? Next, we have recommendation and approval of the E C A proposal for SAD. Mrs. Schaefer?
This proposal was included in your board packet. The mission of SAD Club is to empower students to make positive, healthy choices by promoting safe driving and responsible decision-making, raising awareness of risk, supporting mental health, stress management, and healthy coping strategies to build a culture of respect, leadership, and resilience. SAD Club will be open to students in grades seven through twelve. I would ask that you approve this club as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
The mood.
Uh, both Ruthie? Or any of the three?
Yeah.
Do I have a second? Was that Mike?
My.
Sorry.
Any discussion? How long's it been since we've had SAD?
Quite some time. Off the top of my head, I do not know, but it, I don't think we have had SAD since I have been at Nettle Creek Schools. Um, it's been quite some time, so it's exciting to see them um bringing it back.
Yeah, cool. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Or zero? And finally, we have recommendation and approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Nettle Creek Teacher Evaluation Manual. Mr. Schaefer?
The proposed changes were highlighted in yellow. Other than wording and dates, the real change was in the individual growth plans for teachers, um, also known as I G Ps. We tried to streamline this process to align with our focus on school goals and the professional development that our teachers are participating in. Um, the uh, changes in that I G P process were discussed in our district I L T meeting today after school um with our building teams uh preparing plans to support teachers in that transition um and again, streamlining that process. So, uh, we will continue to work not only that um towards that as a district leadership team and building leadership teams, but teams, but supporting our teachers with the rollout of the updates on that. The evaluation document has been discussed with the Nettle Creek Teachers Association. I would ask that you approve the document as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Mike?
Second.
Sandy? All those, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or zero? Alright, items of information. Our next special board meeting will be October twenty-ninth with the plan to ratify uh teacher contract and allow for public comment on that contract. Our next regular board meeting is November twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and both of those are here in the L G I room at six thirty. And we are adjourned at seven ten.